Good evening. This is the Rutland Town Planning Commission, and this is August 3rd of 2023. Welcome, everyone. Let's begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Evening, everybody.
Welcome, Andy.
Dana's not going to be here if you want to.
So. So.
Hi.
Hi, Andy. Um, we don't have much to vote on tonight, but everyone here in attendance can vote.
Okay.
So the first thing on the agenda is the agenda. Who will be on the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Hey, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Agenda's good. Uh, no public, and I don't see anyone on Zoom either. So we'll move right down to old business. The short-term rentals ordinance is still sitting in with the select board. There might be a little more, um, support for it now, um, after a couple of meetings with them. They, they do wanna, they still wanna meet with us, and one of the members has some changes, I think, that they wanna make. So that will be August 17th, um, 6:30. And that will be our last meeting for August. So, um, Bill has put together a new draft, and it was sent out to everyone. It has line numbers all the way through it that's just continuous. Yeah, so that's, that's nice. And he put together, for those who do have comments at this point, um, that form where they can write in.
On blank page, yeah.
Yeah. So I, the other night, I, I asked this, you know, I mentioned this to the select board, and I don't know if they thought I was being maybe a bit uppity or something, that we were like, you know, saying, if you have comments, you know, put them down ahead of time, but um, they didn't say anything. And I'll remind them, um, that we would like to just have some order and just not have a free-for-all, uh, you know, just.
I think the chair would understand that.
Yeah. Yeah.
And, and support it.
And support this form?
Approach.
That approach. Yeah, they, they just didn't say anything at all. None of them, so, um, but that's, that's okay.
We gotten any feedback on any particular points? Other than cost, which was mentioned at the meeting?
You know, um, Matt Getty has, it, it sounds like more ma- uh, minor type things he wants to address, and, and there, here and there in the ordinance. Um, Sharon, Sharon Russell was completely opposed, but she said, uh, two meetings ago that she was changing her mind. Um, she was looking at it differently. Bill has had some discussions with her. And, um, I think there might be, you know, um, some support there. And they did have an executive session with Kevin Brown, our attorney, Tuesday night. I'm not sure if this was discussed or not. I have recommended to, to, to Matt and the others that they talk to Kevin Brown, because he's pretty familiar with his ordinance by now, and, and he's familiar with storm, uh, short-term rentals in general, because he worked on the Killington one as well.
Yeah.
So.
My thoughts are that it's item number six that could be the stick point, that nobody says, and that, that nobody wants to come out where it's labor, the labor and industry inspection. We, we hear, you know, at the, at both the meetings we were at, it, it was continually mentioned, needs more study, needs more study, needs more study. But, I mean, to me, we've studied, we know the facts, we know what's there, we know what's, we have the groundwork. I don't know how much more we can study it and get anything more, more out of it.
This is section six?
More facts, so.
I, I, section six?
What requires a labor and industry inspection?
Regulatory requirements for prohibited activities?
Isn't it? I'm sorry, maybe I'm wrong.
Yeah, Bill. Yeah, I think it's based on labor and industry.
And.
Yeah. From my department of public safety.
Oh, pardon. It's the public.
Oh, that's what I do it all the time. We used to call it that all the time. But it just didn't want to.
We've just been calling it that for the past forty years.
It's easy to say that, but it's.
It's government to ship.
So it's the public safety inspection?
That's right. That's right. Sorry, Andy. Yeah.
Well.
It's easy. I still say that all the time.
Yeah, labor and industry is like, I don't remember that in there. Um, yeah, it was interesting. I mean, Kevin, I, I gave this to the select board, um, a couple of weeks ago, and I think I had it here at our last meeting. He, um, he said that any kind of commercial, anyone making money or having a business where they're lodging people, that's required. And he says it's required for any, you know, any type of rental.
Yes.
So.
Okay.
It's, it's state law. So he really, we really can't take it out of there.
No, no, but I think then, I hate to say this, but then, um, I wasn't sure whether that was the state law or not as far as, because it, it isn't for one and two-family homes right now, right?
Sure.
It's, you, yeah, anything. Two-family can be done by a work permit.
Right, right. So anybody could still do this work?
Yes.
It wouldn't have to be licensed.
So maybe we should say in that, in that section pursuant to Vermont state law. So there isn't any question that isn't, that we're not bringing the inspection in, that the inspection is required whether this ordinance goes through or not.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
The inspection is required. It's a good point.
Yeah. Kevin went on to say that even though it is law, it's, it's rarely enforced. There's no one to enforce it. And that's one of the reasons. So, so we are trying to help that by requiring it and showing proof of it. That, so. Trying to help a little bit with the enforcement, but not doing, you know, the actual enforcement of it.
All right. That's all I have to say. At least on this matter.
You can fill out the suggestion.
Didn't Bill say he went on a, one of these site visits?
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm. I don't remember exactly what he said, but it was, how did it go?
The. Um, I, I think the, the, the property owner was very cooperative. From what I remember, there were a number, there were several things that were cited in the inspection, and it seemed like, you know, everybody was on board to get them fixed and keep moving. I, I forget what the use of that property was.
I missed a meeting, so I'm a little behind here. But who did the inspection?
The, um, it was the, um, Rutland area fire safety.
Oh, okay, not us.
Not us. Bill just went along.
Yeah, we're, yeah, because we don't have any authority to do it yet.
No.
Okay.
And we wouldn't, even with this ordinance.
Yeah.
We're just asking for proof that it has been done. And ask, and asking just once. Unless the property changes hands.
Right. It's just the first time inspection and, and unless something changed with it.
Yeah, it's not, not even an annual thing. So, okay. So we'll, um, we'll have them here at our meeting on the seventeenth, the select board.
Will they buy in the refreshments or?
I'll, I'll add that to you. Okay, so, uh, anything else on short-term rentals? The next thing on the agenda, um, with all of the storm and all of the new disaster declarations, just wanted to ask the group, do we want to move up consideration of a river corridor ordinance, which would, um, which would mean more money could come to the town for damages, municipal damages? Not individual damages, but damages to roads and any municipal buildings if they pass this bylaw, this river corridor ordinance. So we kinda had put it on hold, um, when we started taking up the short-term rentals, because we knew that that was gonna take up a lot of time. Do we want to move that up and have that next on our list of things to do, things to look at?
And just look at it again, you mean? Start looking at it?
Yeah. And figuring out how to, how to present it to the town, and, and particularly the landowners that would be affected.
If we're, if, if we just choose to do that, right? It's kind of the same as the, it's the same as a short-term rental. We haven't decided that we should have that ordinance.
Right, right. And that's a good point. Do we want to like go through the, the sample ordinance first? Or do we want to get like Kyle, remember we had Kyle Madash talk to us, have him come back and just give us?
Refresh us.
Refresh us, right? And give us.
Yeah, I would think so. I mean, we've really focused on this and some other stuff since then.
But we, but you, but that, but are you suggesting that he comes back? Or not until we talk about it?
Uh, maybe. I'm asking, do we want him to, do we want to start with him coming back?
I just think that might be taking up his time, that we don't need to. I mean, what if, what if we kinda open this up and we talk about it, and we're like, we really don't want to pursue it, then we've had him come here and taken up his time for nothing. I don't know. I don't, maybe I'm wrong, but.
Well. He's probably more knowledgeable.
But, but what, what can he tell us that he already hasn't? It just, it, I mean, what is he gonna come in here and go give the same kind of PowerPoint again? That's my whole point, is that it just seems pointless for him to take it to another level till we say we want to take it to another level, and do we know that?
He can explain. He's, he's the best one to explain the benefits of it, and also it's the, some of the stickier parts of the ordinance. You know, what would, what would be the new obligations and new requirements?
I would think I, I don't remember much of the presentation. It's been a while, and, um, particularly given the heightened importance of both to the town and, you know, since the flood. It might be well to have that background again. Um, it's been about a year, hasn't it?
It's been close to a year. I think it was last fall.
If you wouldn't mind, I mean.
Yeah, I can feel him out and see, see how busy he is.
If he doesn't feel it's an inconvenience or.
And what I could also do, I, I know one, um, comment from the select board when this has come up is like, um, well, you know, what, what, what difference would this have made in Irene? So I want to put some numbers together and not take Rutland Town as an example, because we haven't, we didn't then, and we didn't this, in, you know, in July, have a lot of municipal damage, a lot of damages in the town. But I can take another town, Brandon or somebody else, or maybe Mount Holly now, um, and get those numbers added up. And show by passing this ordinance what the town would save. Makes sense, then?
Because this, our, we're probably gonna have more of these. Oh.
Yeah.
Um, if this proposal that the, the governor is calling for passes, uh, I expect it's gonna go through the legislature, doesn't it?
Uh, what proposal was that?
What's that?
Wha- what proposal are you referring to?
It's the, um, state, um, buying out, uh, the real egregious
Oh.
properties that are seem to be a problem every time.
Right.
Well, my, my guess is if that passes, if there's any left that don't qualify for buying out, and they're still on the floodplain, they probably are not gonna get insurance.
Right, and, and there are some instances where towns have bought those properties.
That, that will be something that, uh, I don't think, uh, there will be too much of that, but there probably will be a few.
Right, and, and the problem area is east and west Proctor roads, right, in town? Maybe Creek Road, maybe. Lot of farmland down there, but.
Well, there was some, uh, structures that came close to getting really nailed up at, uh, on Route Seven North, uh, in the town up near Williams Farm in that area last time. Uh, I was, uh, on the select board then, and the governor came down and he'll, his, uh, people from, um, I forget what department, but there was quite a crew of them here looking that all over. I don't know if anything transpired from that visit or not, but I think, uh, I, I think that's something that we probably could, uh, find out.
Mm-hmm.
Might not be a bad.
Well, that's it. That's a really good point, Jim. Um, you know, whether there are some structures that, that are in, that are, that are getting, uh, continually flooded in town, and do we, should there be a buyout as opposed to like inserting those people in this ordinance and making them do these upgrades and, and all that, and putting restrictions on them? Maybe they should just be bought out.
Of course, we don't know what the law's gonna say, you know, how they're gonna word it, or if certain elevations are gonna be exempt or, or not, or where they're gonna draw the line. Nobody knows.
When you're talking about properties damaged or repeatedly damaged, you're talking about private properties or town-owned properties?
Well, um, so we're, we're in both realms with this ordinance. The, the, um, it, financial advantages are just for expenses the town has to put out, you know, for its structures and its, you know, infrastructure.
Did we have any damage or any of our town's infrastructure?
In this, in July?
Yeah.
No, um, we had some, um, partial road closures or, or, you know, uh, short road closures.
Yeah, Route Four over here, you know, those closed, um. They want to do, have a buyout. Fire district's got a pump station down here. It gets flooded out every year, and we'd love to have some, have somebody buy it out.
Yeah, hopefully there'll be some state money associated with, with that buyout. I mean, in some cases, towns have gone ahead and you know, bought properties and turned those into, you know, parks or, you know, open areas so that people will not keep building on them.
I know. I had to vacate. It was scary as hell. And, um, um, uh, I can't imagine what people are going through who are absolutely dislodged, no hope of, you know. Just never, whatever goes into that pocket park better be.
How high does it?
How high did it come up? I could see the scouring on the, on the bank. It would have been underwater.
Oh, it'd be underwater.
The whole thing was underwater?
The, the beach area?
No, I meant, did it get to the roadway?
Almost.
It did?
Oh, it did. That, that it coming over the falls down here?
Yeah.
I would say it was pretty damn close to that, to the road. It had to be within a couple of feet. Wasn't it? You, you would have seen it how it directly.
Well, I, no, I didn't go down. Actually, I didn't see the heights of this, but here, around, on the other side where we have our sewer pump station, we were.
But with the road closed, it had to come close, right? My, it had to be.
Certainly, certainly you gotta be up that bank quite a bit.
I could say.
But that was roaring.
That'd be interesting.
And, and, and this was one of the areas that they kept identifying as a major flood area. Otter Creek and Center Rutland was one of the major flood areas. It, it was one of the major ones that was going on. Definitely was. We, we got hammered here. Uh, we were on, right on the top of the list, so to speak.
I mean, every, as soon as you step off the road there, you're step, you're going downhill.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it had to be, the majority of that had to be groundwater.
Yeah, except for the area where we're, we're thinking about, we're putting most of the features is in that overlook area.
Right.
Yeah, off those little parking lot.
I'm sure that was not, but.
But what you said, it was pretty close.
Well, it had to be. Go over the road, even across Route, I mean, I'm only speculating. Somebody that saw it could tell you, but it had to be damn close to crossing that, coming up to that road right there. Had to be. It was rolling almost straight over those falls days later. It was crazy.
Up to Simons Avenue. Well, might have to flood-proof the park.
How we gonna do that?
We'll see if Kyle has any ideas.
It was fifty years ago when I was in National Guard, my unit was involved in the Ludlow, Cavendish, Mount Holly area flood. It was fifty years ago when that one happened. And so forget the hundred-year floods. I mean, it's, things are changing.
Right, and that's why I'm bringing this up. Yeah, we're we're getting them very regularly now. Okay, I'll follow up on some of those things. Um, townwide celebration is August nineteenth, um, from ten to two. We're gonna have, um, we're not gonna have much from the planning commission. Well, I guess we'll roll out the, the pocket park map again. Um, and, but we, we've got a lot of other things that, um, the energy committee's been working on. So we've got GMP there with two, uh, electric vehicles. Um, Ace Hardware's gonna be there with battery-powered yard equipment. Um, Efficiency Vermont is gonna be there with, I don't know, whatever they bring. Um, we've got Brock, which is, Dana works there now, and Dana will be manning that, that table. Um.
With Dosey?
Yes.
Full-time?
I don't know. I'm not, I'm not sure about that. Um, and then I think we have Heat Squad, and then, um, uh, what's the solar company downtown? Sun?
Sun Common.
Sun Common. Phil Allen's.
Yeah, Sun Common, probably.
Yeah. Um, he might be there as well. Um, so. So we've got quite a bit going on in that, and I think that, you know, there'll be the fire trucks and, and that kind of stuff as well. So, um, if anyone has any time on the, uh, the nineteenth, that come and sit at the.
I'll sit from ten to twelve.
Okay.
I will check my calendar at home.
Is there anything I should know beforehand?
No, no, and I'll.
You'll be there.
Yeah. And maybe Andy? Okay, okay. I'll ask Mary Beth. She, um, she helped out last time, too. And with Mary Beth, she has a new job. Um, she's with, uh, Ducks Unlimited. She, her, her office will be in New York, but she's working remotely from home. So she's staying here, and she's gonna stay on the planning commission for now. Yeah.
Lot of movement.
Yeah. So, yeah, she's, she's getting quite a bit of attention lately between awards and, and new jobs, so that's great.
Is she an engineer? What, for you?
She is, um, she's a, a scientist. She specializes in wetlands. So is that a kind of, kind of a biologist, kind of a landscape?
Bike pass?
And ye- yes, that's on the side. So that's good. So we're kinda like down to announcements. I, I did want to go back to, um, the post-road solar project, proposed project, and just give an update on that. And I've got, um, some drone footage to show. It was here a second ago, uh, but I'll find it. Um, so that's the three-megawatt project off, uh, Route Seven North on, on Thomas property. They now plant corn or whatever, um, there. We, um, we asked for a site visit. We asked for it, and the select board asked for it, and they're willing to do it, but um, we're not gonna do it while the corn is high. So we're gonna do it this fall, um, but it may be after they've already filed their full application to the state. So that's why, um, um, we got some drone footage from them to kind of look at the, the site. They still have to do an aesthetics review and a cultural historical review. There might be something, um, on the ladder, uh, in that area. The.
When this came up once before, not this specific project, but another project there, there was some concern about archaeological.
Exactly, exactly.
And has that ever been determined, whether there was?
I think that's, that project may have stopped before they, they'd gotten to that, that review process.
Pretty quickly.
And, you know, if you look at the site plan for the solar project, it is, it is into those areas that we think um, might be in question. And, you know, both this group and the select board have indicated that, you know, they would like it set back a little bit more than they, they have it right now. But as we'll see in the drone footage, um, there is a wetlands in the middle. Right now, it's being, you know, planted with corn, um, on the western side and on the eastern side of the, the parcel. And in, in the middle is a wetlands, and so there needs to be a fifty-foot buffer all around that.
And is the archaeological area near the wetlands?
As I under, as I remember when that, um, car, um, body place was, was, um, when that was going through the Act 250 process and then dropped out, um, those, those potential archaeological areas are on the west side. So.
Towards Route Four.
Uh, Route Seven, yeah.
Route Seven, excuse me, yeah.
Yeah.
This was the, between the two automobile dealerships in front. I, I went up there and we were up there years ago, um, when, um, Bill's predecessor was on the board. We took a tour. Do you remember that?
Mm-hmm.
The wood product. Or was that another solar project at that time, or?
No, I think that was the car body place.
That was what?
It was, I think it was a car body repair.
Oh, okay. They were going to extend back there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I don't know what they were gonna do with the wetlands, that, that girl, but, uh, they bagged out anyway.
Is this developer somebody new? Has he done other stuff for Thomas Dairy, or is he?
No, it's not the same one.
That same one.
Yeah.
It's.
I know one time they were looking at solar, even on the east side of the property, and and I know some of the developers just walked away from that for various reasons. They, they weren't interested in it. Sticky area, really, everything that's that they've got to deal with.
Yeah, so, um, so we're asking the developer to consider a setback, and he's, he's not, um, he doesn't know if he can do it, but he will wait until after the aesthetic review is done. And so that was, that will, I guess, show us, you know, what we can see going, you know, by, um, the site on Route Seven. Um, the select board is also interested in, um, in a payment in lieu of taxes, and we got that from Otter Creek, um, from the last project that went in, the last big one, oh.
Cold River?
Cold River Road. And that was, um,
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The Otter Creek one and two project. So, uh, they want, they want to pursue that too. Um. Let me see if I can find. There it is. We'll watch a little movie. It's about two minutes long. It was not showing up there. Where's Bill when you need him? Or for the sake of time, if you want to just come around here and look at this. Green is pretty big. Um. Norm, you wanna come see this?
Yeah.
Jim, do you wanna watch this?
Sure.
Some reason I thought you were gonna put it.
Yeah.
To that?
Hmm.
Is your voice on that or just?
No, it's just, it's just drone footage. So here's, um, Route seven. So it's gonna go around the perimeter of the parcel. And it's gonna show us, it makes a point of showing us, uh, where the wetlands are in the middle.
This is seven?
This is seven here. Yeah, so I think some of this might be some of that culturally sensitive area there.
And this is post road?
Mm-hmm. So it's going right up to the parcel boundary.
Is that land?
Nope, just, just follow the, follow the drone. Look in there. There's some trees, talking about taking some of those down.
I didn't notice that was so elevated.
And this is, this is the wet area.
So he.
So they can't, they wouldn't be going in that area?
No, there'd be panels here and panels there.
Who's flying this drone?
Um, the developer had someone do it.
Oh, that's it right there.
Yeah, he didn't get very much of the eastern part.
Hmm, that's where I remember them. Right there was where I remember the architectural area, architectural, uh, uh, excuse me. Archaeological area was right in there. Cause that other building was gonna be right here.
Uh-huh.
Right there.
Yeah, that was. But they had water issues.
They had, they, they, I heard they stopped because Act two fifty was gonna require them to build a side.
Yeah, that's what they told the town.
That's what they told the town.
Yeah.
It was in the paper.
Two fifty was gonna require a what?
A sidewalk to nowhere.
Sidewalk to the city.
Yeah.
But this is, that, that building was gonna be here. And I remember in the back north eastern corner. That's how I remember it, was where there was a archaeological.
I remember walking down with Joe's and Kelly. Remember that? Took that.
I don't think I was at that site.
I forget what project it was.
So, yeah, we know that, so that, I guess there's a, a, a stream that runs from the wetlands in the middle.
Oh, that's the.
Down to where it's really wet.
Morse, Morse Oro, the backside of Morse Oro. And then the substation on Post Road.
That's a substation. We've been through some problems with them.
And.
How close are you?
I believe there'll be some panels up there.
We have closer Reserve Center, there'll be.
Yeah, um, let me try to dig up the site. Well, I've got this, this is a, an A R map. And as I remember, they, um, in their site plan, they had panels here and they had panels. They were gonna take some of these trees, panels over here.
So that's right next to the Reserve Center, isn't it?
Yeah.
Right next to.
And the Army Reserve Center. Farmers that field that they kind of clip, they come up and then they turn like this with the drone. They missed this field kind of, which looks like it's gonna be included.
Yeah, I remember it is.
That's gonna be right up next to the, is this gonna be developed right here with?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Can you do it one more time?
Are there people gonna have anything to say about that?
Well, it, it's his private property.
Hmm.
It, as long as we, you know, they stay on, and they're gonna be purchasing this parcel.
From?
From the Thomases, yeah.
It looks like by that, that it, this, that it goes to this tree line and then goes straight back.
The parcel does. Yeah, that's not the site plan.
Oh, 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 they're gonna, they're gonna go on to someone else's parcel?
Hmm, uh. No, I think the, the drone tried, it did turn here.
Right, but it kind of goes over to Morse, which is down, yeah, no, you're right, you're right, my bad, my bad.
My bad.
I have the site.
But then right here where it turns, it doesn't really, the drone really doesn't go over to that field right there.
Right.
Which this shows they're gonna occupy, or maybe put some, right?
I'm surprised they didn't do that. Why did, why did they stop short of that?
Why they stopped?
They had the drone there.
This field right here.
Yeah.
The site that shows it as being in that field. That must be, you see all the stuff out there, that must be the back of Max.
Yeah.
Yeah. See all the steel and junk out there?
Yeah.
But it makes sense, there's the wetlands in the middle because, you know, there's the wetlands toward Post Road and there's the wetlands behind Max Steel and, you know, east on the highway there.
It gets pretty wet down by that substation, right? Gets, gets real wet in there most.
Is this the?
No.
Boundary line?
Yes, that's the parcel line.
Parcel line.
But yeah, he's just barely giving us a little bit of the.
There it is.
Where it would be, yeah.
To purchase that property, put all this investment in, there's gotta be some money in it, right?
Yeah, that one up on, that one up on Cold River Road, they already changed hands three times. There's gotta be some money in it.
Yeah.
It's in current use. So it's all gonna disappear. You gotta pull it out of current use and pay a penalty.
Yep.
When you pull it out.
Yep.
Even more money.
Yeah, I mean.
Well, for that.
No, I, I think other developers have looked at this and walked away from it.
Well, for, for that one at Cold River Road to have changed hands a couple times, there's money in it. Or they wouldn't be able to be, it wouldn't able, be able to happen.
Same thing with the one on Stewart Road.
Yeah.
That's changed hands.
Yeah.
It's a good time, so.
Everybody getting their little piece of the pie.
And, and yeah, and he, I mean, he's talked about how he needs it. He needs it to be three megawatts to make it financially. He, he needs it to be big, which is what Otter Creek one and two.
Yeah.
Cold River Road is as well.
Yeah.
Well, it's be some, I don't know. Quickly afterwards, soon afterwards? Yeah, I remember one on, the one on Stewart Road, the, they had some issues. Fire department had some issues with what was going on and they had a difficulty contacting the owners, not even, they didn't know if the owners, the new owners to it at that time. It was, it was, you really didn't know what, what was what. We, and, you know, even the listener's office, we, we didn't have the right information. They, they changed.
So, okay, well, they'll, they'll take it out of current use, but also if it goes into solar, solar panels, um, developed for that purpose, um, the town loses tax revenue. Most of that property tax revenue goes to the state, right? Once it becomes a solar project?
Yeah, because we, cause our municipal tax rate is so low, we, we just get peanuts. We really, we get little or nothing from it, basically. If it was in the city, it's a whole different ballgame. You know, you go from a, whatever they have, it's a dollar eighty tax rate, we have a, I guess they say a twenty cent tax rate, it's a huge, huge difference. And the town doesn't make money from these solar systems.
And that's why the payment in lieu of taxes, the select board is interested in pursuing that. Which we haven't really talked to, um, the developer.
I think, I think the board looked at that this last time, they, they, I remember doing some work for them, they wanted to know if this was in the city, what would the city be getting for taxes on it compared to what we were getting? And that's what really got their attention. They, they saw that the, that was like a gold mine to the city and to us it was nothing. That's when they did some negotiating and got. That's something.
Okay, so, um, yeah, I assume we're still interested in a site visit when the corn is cut in. Okay. And like I said, uh, the full application.
When's that? Do we have a date yet?
No, we don't know when they're gonna cut the corn.
I'm sorry?
We don't know when they're gonna cut the corn.
September, late. Could be very late. Yeah, it's gonna be late this year too.
Okay, um, just a couple other things, um, we, there, the old friendlies, um, that, there were a couple of things that were sent out, um, that has gotten an Act two fifty permit. And an Act two fifty, um, amendment, um, to start the demolition of, of the building. Yeah.
The mail, this, the address that they're using for that is not correct. They're using one sixty five South Main Street, which is Eddie Ice in the city. That's one sixty five, it should be one sixty five, uh, Route seven south. And, and, and they've got it as.
One sixty.
Sixty five.
South Main Street.
Main Street, that is, that is wrong, that's wrong, that's in the city. That's in the city.
So they're gonna demolish the forty seven hundred square foot friendlies and put up a twenty four hundred square foot coffee shop.
Friendlies? No, same people?
No.
No, I, probably Starbucks. With a forty two indoor and twenty seasonal outdoor seats and thirty three parking spaces and drive-through size for thirteen vehicles to queue up in. So they're, they're on their way with that project that. Probably see the.
They got it in the wrong, they got it in the wrong town.
Yeah.
Information. And this happens time and time again. You know, before we did the nine one one number we were at South Main Street and the numbers were completely different. And every now and then, they go back to the same old. So it's a, it's a coincidence that there's a one sixty five in the town, there's a one sixty five on South Main Street in the city, which is Eddie Ice, two different places. And it, it's, they do say well in town, but it's, it's the wrong street, wrong street name by far.
And then the other thing was sent out was that the, um, the storage place on, uh, thirteen thirty one Route seven north, cross from Williams Farm.
Be God next storage.
Yeah, that, um, they wanted to put up a new sign and they wanted to expand, but they keep missing their deadlines.
They expanded.
Well, they, they, they did all this land disturbance.
They, they did a big expansion. But I was still involved here. They did an expansion and, and the owners are from like Las Vegas, this, this, is what it is. And they, they paid big bucks for this, uh, parcels. And, and now this issue has got a lot to do with signs. I don't know if they want to do more development, but it's, it's the sign issues and they, they're, they're complying with.
But yeah, they, they don't like two, Act two fifty with the saying, and then the color of the building and it's like.
About change the colors, I guess.
It's a storage unit, it's like.
That's another booming business, storage buildings.
Storage units. That's like a, that's like a national, uh, unit up there that's there now. And there's, there's a few of them around there. They're really big.
So I think it'll probably stay the way it is.
But they need a sign, they wanna change the sign.
They wanna change, they gotta meet their, they gotta get their forms in.
Yep.
Must be good money in those two, the ones that I've seen being built in Florida have elevators. They're multi-level, three and four stories. Climate controlled.
Um, yeah, no, it really is. Obviously, it's, they're, they're good business.
Okay, any other announcements, news? Yeah, the only thing we have left is the minutes from, um, July thirteenth.
I didn't see any typos, I don't know about substantive issues.
You, you can't vote.
I'm sorry?
And you can't even vote.
Right.
But he checked it over for us, so.
I won't do it anymore. I thought Sustainer wasn't gonna be here, I should do it.
Much appreciated.
You've been our rock, Norma. You've been our rock as far as getting the minutes straight.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll move.
There a second?
Well, I'll second it, but I'm gonna understand.
I think that's allowed.
Okay.
And, and just FYI, we still don't have any information back from Don Folsom of the Fortress of Fun down here. He wanted us to write a letter of recommendation for a grant. And, uh, we'll do it when, when he gives us the grant information. Any discussion on the minutes? All those in favor?
I
Opposed?
I'm gonna abstain.
Abstain, abstain.
Abstain.
Uh, we do it, we don't have enough votes.
You don't have enough votes.
I don't have, no, no.
They get, I guess.
Are we allowed to vote, even if we weren't here?
No.
Because when you're, no? Because you're, you're just, we're voting to say that they've been checked over and they're accurate, right?
Right, but you, you have no idea if they're accurate. Hey, we'll have to take up the minutes again. On August seventeenth, our next meeting. So we'd be great to have a good showing for that, for the Select Board. Just let them know one more time how we feel about this, this issue.
We're hosting now.
Home court.
Select Board's gonna be here.
Yeah. I think they'll be sitting out there.
Good.
Our meeting.
Yeah.
It's our meeting, sure.
Okay, anyone wanna move to adjourn?
Sure.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, we're adjourned.